If the clerk will call the roll. Here.
Here.
Councilor Moore is here?
Yeah.
I'm sure that Councilor Murphy will arrive shortly. This is the continuation of the Ad Hoc Clerk Oversight Subcommittee. We received the report at the last meeting. We have a list of issues to be addressed in the clerk's office. And we will try to get through as many as we can. So, tonight, I thought that we would, if there's anything to be added to this list before we adjourn our recess for this evening, then the fellow members of the committee can certainly give me those, and I'd be happy to add anything else. Otherwise, we'll move, following that, we'll move on here from the auditor, the things that might be accomplished through that office to address some of these issues. Then, from the manager's office, we have Assistant City Manager Tom Moses. And we'll then do as much as we can with the time remaining. Hopefully, we should be finished by about 6:30, I hope. And we may not get through everything, and there'll be some homework to do after to how can we best address some of these things. So, that's my plan for the evening. So, I'll start, if any of the members of the committee have anything to add to the list immediately, otherwise, you can review it during the meeting and if you have anything more. And we're not going to close the list this evening. Throughout this process, if we come across any other issues that need to be addressed, we'll add them to the list. So, it's certainly not intended to be completely enclosed by this evening. Do any of the other, you have any question? Sure, I'm Councilor Mercer.
I just have a comment about a previous statement about a box that's in the clerk's office that has a number of, I don't know, I think it's when we had to file with the Ethics Commission and do that online test and get an approval that, or approval that we have completed that. And it was, a lot of that was put in a box, and it was all stacked up. For the record, I did check on that, and it isn't like it was just all saved and put into a box. It was actually logged into a computer, so it is all documented. It may be in a box in the clerk's office, but it is all accounted for and all computerized. I just thought that that should be said for the record. Do you know what I mean, Eric?
Yes, our acting clerk, if you want to comment on that.
If I could just make a quick comment on the, on the issue that Councilor Mercer brought up. The state ethics portion of the clerk's office, the compliance requirements in the clerk's office, involved some paperwork coming in from city employees who had completed an online ethics test and new employees who certified that they were aware of the state ethics guidelines. There's mention in Attorney Leahy's report of those documents being stored in a box in the city clerk's office. That was, in fact, the case. That the, the MIS department also created a database in Munis, which operated to store some of the information from those documents in an electronic format. And the assistant clerk had, at the time those documents came in during the initial phase of testing, both from the city side and the school department side, attempted to enter the, the information from those documents into the database. And after a review of those documents, they are no longer in a box. They have been removed, alphabetized, and cataloged in the clerk's office so that we can better keep track of, of those documents. And we are also making efforts to determine which of those documents, if any, were not entered in the database. There was some technical issues regarding employees not being in the database and then having to be manually entered. But it appears as though a significant portion of the, the documents that were stored regarding the state ethics compliance
Right.
paperwork were actually entered into the database at the time those documents came in.
Right, so we're moving along pretty well with that, are we not?
Well, it's, it's a bit of a challenge right now because the, as I think Attorney Leahy mentioned at his last, his appearance at the last Subcommittee meeting, the state ethics testing needs to be done once every two years. The testing was initially done, starting in late 2009 and proceeding into the spring of 2010 for all existing employees at that time. And then, as employees have come on, they've been required to, to do it. But the majority of the employees of the City of Lowell were existing in 2009, and they all were required to take the test at that time. So, the documents that were stored in the clerk's office involve that round of testing. The challenge that we have is, all of those people will be, their certifications will be expiring by approximately March of 2000.
How will we get that message out to the employees now? We're going to do that, right?
I think the, the goal is going to be, the clerk's office, I've already reached out to both the MIS department and to the Human Relations Department to, we're going to have to kind of restart the process that they did back in 2009 of, of reaching out to all the city employees on both the city side and the school department side, kind of retraining everyone who hasn't done this in two years as to the steps they have to take to take the online testing again.
And the council had to do that as well, didn't we?
I believe that
Yes, we did.
Every city employee, including every member of every board and commission, is required to take that state ethic testing, ethics testing. And I think we, there are some challenges that we had, that the city had in 2009 with the, both the database and the paperwork that came in. And I'm going to be working while I'm in the, the acting clerk position with MIS and the Human Resources Department to try and streamline the process a little bit so that the challenges that we had before won't crop out this time, and working to have the database up and running so that all of the current employees are in the database and we can, we can kind of start anew for the 2000, the end of 2011 round of this testing.
And having kind of understood that portion of the big, long list that we have, and Chairman Councilman Donza put together a pretty accurate list of concerns in a simple word or a couple of words, that was part of this report. So, and I know, Eric, that you're not going to be there all that long, but the fact remains that if something is completed, if we have a list and you could put work in progress, what you're working on, what your office is working on, and things that were completed, because Attorney Leahy did a tremendous job with saying all the issues that need to be addressed. And if we could have an idea as a, as a Subcommittee, what, what is going on there? What are you addressing? What's a work in progress? What is completed? That'd be beneficial to us.
We'll be getting to that. So, when we get to the clerk's portion, I was going to cover that, but it's what you said, so it's fine. It's nothing contradictory with what I think we'll all expect. Councilor Martin, do you have anything?
Well, somewhat related to that, and I started this last time down this road, but it's, as much as it's progress to have what was, you know, in a box sorted and alphabetized and indexed, I don't, it's not where we want to be. I, I think paper records are, you know, to the extent we're not required to keep paper records, we shouldn't, you know? And if those can be scanned and archived that way, you know, I think our model should be the registry deeds for the clerk's office. I mean, that's, they've made tremendous strides there. I'm not sure what they keep in paper records there anymore. Certainly, nothing historic is kept in paper record and not much current, because you, you record something, they scan it, and then they hand it back to you, and that's it. So, I know you're, you're there temporarily, and I think that's a worthwhile effort that you put in to organize and categorize this. But I think as we look at it as a Subcommittee long-term, our, our eye should be on, you know, reducing the amount of paper that's need to be kept in the office. So, that's my only comment there.
All right, so we do have the list, and again, we can add to it as we go along if we hear or find of anything new. At this point, I'll move on to the auditor portion. And basically, what I'd like to know from your office is what can be done. And I'm focused primarily on the financial aspects. If there's anything more you want to add, that's fine. But currently, we had an issue with the actual cash kept in the office, which I think has been addressed in the short term as to how much they can have and how it's accounted for, the receipts that need to be created and kept, all of that. And moving forward, I think what we're going to need, to keep everyone honest, is if your office could provide a kind of audit function that maybe once a month, you just go in and do an unannounced check of the cash and the receipts to make sure it's what expected. And from there, maybe report, you know, generate a communication to the council that on such, such a date, this was done, this was the result, if there are anomalies, this was the recommendation or the corrective action taken. So, something to that effect, if you would speak to that.
I was going to say, actually, we're already doing that independently in a weekly basis. I'm getting a report from the clerk's office listing all the checks and the cash. So, I'll go into Munis to make sure that, in fact, is what is being put into Munis for the Treasury. So, we're doing that on a weekly basis right now.
Well, that part I can understand. I'm just wondering if you could take it to another step of actually checking the cash in the bag. Just, again, unannounced, once a month, so nobody knows it's going to happen. And of course, if, if that's something you could do, then
Sure.
it could be a recommendation from this committee to make it policy. And then also to have the report to the council, because going forward, we need that oversight. We need to, we can't do it ourselves.
Absolutely.
But obviously, we need to report back that it is being done. And later on, it might be a good idea to do anywhere there's cash. And again, it doesn't have to be an extensive process, but I know banks do this all the time. They have an auditing committee that goes and just does these random checks.
No, I think that sounds like a great idea.
Okay. I mean, as far as the auditing goes, I mean, of the issues we have, that seems to be the biggest area of concern.
Correct.
And again, the, the immediate issue is addressed. But the long-term oversight issue is what I'm trying to get at now. Do the other members of the committee concur?
Yes, I concur. Did you need a motion, Eric?
If this is something the auditor can do, and the response I'm getting is that it can be done.
Absolutely.
Then, yes, I think if we had a motion to have that done on a somewhat regular basis.
All right, so I'll concur with your motion.
You want to make the motion?
Well, to have the
Auditor.
Auditor check monthly, did you want?
Yeah, I think
Sporadically.
Sporadically, yeah.
That's probably so.
But at least quarterly. Could be multiple times in the quarters.
You want to be notified about it as well as
Yes, I think we need to have that notification, just the communication that goes in our packet, so we know that it occurred.
So, for the
What do we say? Could I suggest something?
Sure.
That, that the auditor do
Sporadic.
periodic checks of the audit, but no less than quarterly, although it could be more than.
Yes.
You know, the last thing you want to do is show up on the second day of a quarter and have people say, okay, I'm good for the next 90 days, right?
Right.
So, as frequently as you feel is necessary, but at least once a quarter. And then with a quarterly report to the council.
If that's not too cumbersome. Yeah, the cash and the receipts to make sure there's nothing missing. The numbered receipts.
The numbered, in numbered receipts. Okay, so, second, second done.
All right, so, motion by Councilor Martin, second by Councilor Mercer. And if this Roll call. Yes. Yes.
Councilor Mercer?
Yes.
Are we on television?
Is this televised?
We are. We are, okay.
Okay.
I didn't know if I should be keeping the mic on.
All right, Madam Auditor, if there's anything other issues here you want to comment on, or I just give you the opportunity now?
The only other thing on the list is the, the cash register, and I think when we get a new city clerk, we should all discuss that together. My suggestion would be to have the MIS director find out what's out there for cash registers that are programmable, that aren't too expensive, because, I mean, we, we have this system down pat. Is it overkill with the cash register? I'm not sure. But I think the new city clerk will have a better handle on that.
Okay, Councilor Mercer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I hate to throw one entity up against another, but I have the greatest respect for the system that's in place in the Register of Deeds with Richard Howe Jr. And people have told me that it's second to none. And I would suggest that maybe perhaps you and an assistant interim city clerk take a ride over there to check out their system and see what that's all about, because I don't think they handle any money. I think it all goes into some sort of a system. People were telling me this just the other day. And sometimes imitation is the best form of flattery. And I think to go over there and check out what they have and see if it might work in this city hall, I think is a good idea, rather than go out looking for this, that, and the other when it's right in front of us
Right.
down the street, so.
Well, I think we need to get the, the new treasurer involved also.
Yes, right, no doubt about it. I'd like to go too, if it was the day I had off.
Some entities, the clerk's office
Yes.
handle no cash at all. And you'll go to the treasurer's office and pay there and come back with a receipt. So, I think it's, it's, if we all got together and, and looked at the whole process to see what's best for us.
Well, if we all went to the Register of Deeds office and we found that it was too expensive a system or too cumbersome or what, then maybe we could bypass that, but it's worth to take a look at it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it was added to the list simply because we need to explore the option. And if there's an alternative that gets what we need done, we could consider it. But it was suggested, and so we'll keep it on the list until we've explored it thoroughly. Anything else, Madam Auditor? So, I think that takes care of some of the pressing cash issues that we had and how to deal with in the future. And now, I'd like to move to the managers' portion, representing the managers, our CFO, Tom Moses. Now, you mentioned to me you have a handout for the committee?
Yes, I have a handout. I'll give it to you right now, but essentially, in my, the normal course of my employment as CFO, I'm constantly looking at other budgets of particularly the 13 largest cities in the Commonwealth. And in preparation for this meeting, I put together copies of the staffing in the clerk's office, the staff that assists the city council, and the elections office, if they have any elections, because some of the clerks actually handle the elections. And I'd like to provide this, you could use it as a resource as you look at the staffing in, in this city clerk's office and decide whether it's adequate or not.
All right, this will most likely be something that we take back with us for, to consider. But I'll have the CFO just explain what's the information in here so that we know what we're looking at later.
Very simply, the first column lists the community, the 13 largest communities in the state. The next column lists the staffing and the city clerk, the number and each type of position. The third column lists staffing under the city council's direction. And in the, there are actually three plan E forms of government here, Cambridge, Lowell, and Worcester. Cambridge doesn't have its personnel information included in its budget, so. But in those other plan E communities, I included the staffing in the mayor's office, because really, the mayor's office acts as support to the city council. And then, the elections office. The next column to the right lists the full-time equivalents of all staffing and all, all three functions. I also list the population, and then the population per FTEs that served. That gives you an indication of the staffing levels. The lower that number, the more staff they have for population, so the more richly staffed that city is. And then, just as an aside in the last column, I ranked that. So, you can see that Boston is the most richly staffed in those functions. And I believe Lawrence is the least richly staffed. Lowell falls pretty much in the middle there. That's just a resource for you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Just what
Councilor, Councilor Martin.
Was, was there nothing available for Cambridge?
No, Cambridge, their budget, their award-winning budget contains no information about individual staffs, staff. They may indicate staff numbers, but I couldn't tell you which positions are in there.
Just not, not to get the mayor excited, but when I, when I was mayor, I think the mayor has a staff of five in Cambridge.
I worked in Cambridge, and the decor in the mayor's office is, is second to none.
Any other comments? Otherwise, we'll just accept this as a reference. And we, that is one of the things we will be getting to, is the staffing issues in the clerk's office, and that'll be with the clerk. And then, we'll get back with the manager as far as budgeting for that goes. The other items are anything on a list that's going to need funding in one way or another. We will want to know what it will cost, if it's not obvious, and most of them aren't, if there are funds available in the current budget, or how to get funds available in the next budget if needed. And if, if there's, if there's funds available in the current clerk's office, or if it would have to be by transfer. And so, you may, if you have some time to do some of that research on these items in the list that might involve some funding. The ones that come to mind immediately would be obviously equipment. So, any equipment, they'll be necessarily beyond what's already there. I know they can already scan documents, so whether or not any new equipment is needed for that, or any computerization is needed, or as we scan all these documents, if more storage is needed, that sort of thing. There might also be some software. I know you're trying to implement AgendaNet, so if there's any licensing. Also, one of the things that brought up to us is that the clerk and assistant clerk should be members of associations if we have the funding and what those dues might be. I'm not even sure what they are. So, there's several things on the list, so anything that might need some kind of funding for, it would be good to get the background information on as to how, what are the ways and means that we could accomplish that?
I'll, I'll do the research, but right off the top of my head, usually, smaller departments such as the clerk's department, their budgets are pretty tight. However, the clerk's department annually turns back a small amount of money. So, I, I think some of the smaller costs here might be able to be addressed within the clerk's expense budget. The only concern I have, obviously, personnel is, is different. And in this particular year, I know that there may have been payout of accruals for departing, the departing clerk, and then some transition with temporary. And I'd hesitate to say that there was any surplus or deficit without really taking a look at that right now. But those are all possibilities. Elsewhere within the budget, we do have some flexibility in fiscal 2012, this current year. Because we know the tax, taxes, tax rates are not set yet. So, we do have the ability to make supplemental appropriations if the council felt it important to spend it in the clerk's office and accommodate that before we set a tax rate or even set money in some sort of reserve in the operating budget to do so later in the year. We do have the manager's contingency fund. And as yet, we haven't identified any large uses, but that's really set aside for, you know, lawsuits or any shortfall, unforeseen shortfall in various line items. And if it's left unused, it's usually thrown towards snow and ice deficit. But there is some flexibility within the budget this year.
Yeah, and I think as the committee considers the solutions to many of these, it would be good to know if, if it's not a lot of money and it's available, or if it is a lot of money and you may have to wait till the next fiscal year, to prioritize, and I understand, when this will be addressed based on cost. Just like when we have renovations to do in a home, sometimes we put off the expensive stuff one more year so we can get the funds to do it properly. So, and I mean, this is the list, so I don't want to bound you by, but if anything stands out as, that's likely going to need funding, if you could work on exactly how much it would cost, not exactly, but an estimate, and working with the clerk's office, obviously, and come back with, so that we have that information available to us as we consider how to prioritize this and when to expect things to be resolved.
Sure. The one, the, the one big unknown here, I think, is the funding for the preservation. That would require a lot of interaction with the clerk's office, because we need to know the volume, the condition of certain records before we can even, that's the type of thing where we'd have to call in a professional and ask them to take a look and do an estimate, if not a formal quote, for these to, to even, you know, set. It, it could be, I don't know, anywhere from $1,000 to $100,000, depending on what's there, so.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I will work with them.
And that's why I'd like to get that information. That's a very good point and a very good example of one that could be very expensive. We just want an understanding of how much it would cost and how many books are involved. If it's just one book or multiple books, if it's something we can do over time, one at a time, or we need to do them all at once. I just need that understanding, and the cost is going to probably help us, guide us towards the proper solution of one at a time or multiple. Anything else you want to comment on? Any questions for the CFO or anything we've discussed so far?
I have a
Counsel, oh, Councilor Mercer.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the acting city clerk, are you a justice of the peace?
I am not a justice of the peace at this point.
But we do have a justice of the peace in the assistant city clerk?
The assistant city clerk is a justice of the peace, and I, my application was submitted to the governor's council, but there's been no action on it as far as I know.
So, we do have a certified legal person performing marriages in city hall?
That is correct.
Okay, good, thank you. Are you proposing?
All right, at this point, I'd like to thank the CFO for the input. And at the subsequent meeting, when you have any additional information with consultation with the acting clerk, for now, we need to gather that additional information, I think. So, now, we'll move on to the acting clerk, and we have a huge list of So now, we'll move on to the acting clerk, and we have a huge list of issues here. I don't expect that we necessarily will address them all this evening, but there may be some that you could address in your capacity, and some that we'll have to wait for the permanent clerk to be appointed. One of the things I thought about was, one of the issues that came up was that some of the forms we have in the office have references, or at least, that's what was said in the report, that referenced older ordinances, or were not kept current with the current ordinances. So that might be something that could, in the short term, be addressed by you as acting clerk or someone in the office. So we can start there, and then we can probably hit the bigger categories, if you wish, and then time we have.
Certainly, certainly. I guess I wanted to address, first, I think, the three issues, the three main issues that Attorney Leahy brought up in his report, just kind of in a general fashion. Those three issues were the State Ethics Commission compliance, which we discussed And I think that one of the reasons why I felt that it was important for us to kind of clean house, and was to get an idea, first of all, for compliance reasons, if, without those documents being in some sort of organization, the chances that we could get, that the clerk's office could be reprimanded for not maintaining appropriate records, I think, were, would have been bad. And so, my plan going forward is, to be blunt, to not try and correct all of the errors of the past, in part because there's simply not staffing or time in the office to, I know that Attorney Leahy had talked about working backwards with minutes, and it doesn't make sense to go back and try to correct all the minutes. By the same token, for the State Ethics Compliance, if we have to redo the entire city starting this winter, it doesn't make sense for us to go back and try and re-input all the information that was done before. We have the paper records, we'll maintain the paper records. I don't anticipate us spending staff time trying to force those paper records into a database, when my anticipation is, we're going to have to start doing that on kind of a large-scale basis, with all of the employees of the city and the school department, starting within, you know, a matter of weeks from this point. So, I think that what I'm trying to do, at least, is take a proactive look at the issues regarding all of the issues in the clerk's office, but specifically the State Ethics requirements. We will have everybody do take the test, we will ensure that we have all that information stored electronically. I believe there is a paper requirement by the state that we maintain the paper copy, printout copy of the, certifying the completion of the test. If that is in fact the case, we will maintain that copy. If for some reason, we're allowed to maintain that electronically, we will not maintain the paper copy going forward. And I think that's, that kind of resolves that issue. Whether or not we complied in 2009 and 2010 or not, it's all going to have to be redone starting this winter, and that's what the clerk's office, working with MIS and the HR department, is going to have to do. Similarly, there's some issues with the open meeting law. The, we have revamped the structure of the minutes, starting with Attorney Leahy, and he had been working through that. You may have noticed that there have, we have been undergoing some tweaks in the minutes to attempt to make them both compliant with the open meeting law, and easily maintained. Quite frankly, it's simply not possible for us to do a transcript of each and every subcommittee and council meeting and maintain those, and it's not legally required. So, we're trying to narrow that down to a, kind of a format that works, and is legal, and we'll be hopefully nailing that down within the next, you know, couple of weeks. And that's going to be the format we're going to use going forward for both the council meetings and the subcommittee meetings. Attorney Leahy had already worked with the meeting notices and the compliance with the open meeting law for the notices, including agendas. We, I know that Attorney Leahy had been working on it. I have also been reaching out to all the boards and commissions to ensure that when they are submitting meeting notices, those notices are compliant. If they are not compliant, they are getting, including the school committee, all the boards and commissions within the city, they're getting an email or a phone call back from myself, informing them that they're going to have to redo their meeting notice so that it's compliant with the open meeting law. So far, that has worked very well. All of the boards and commissions in the city and the school department have, that have submitted meeting notices, are currently doing it in a format that's compliant with the open meeting law. There is also a challenge in that each and every member of a board or committee in the city is required to file a certification that they have, they have a copy of the open meeting law, and the open meeting guideline, open meeting law guidelines from the attorney general's office, that they have read and understood the open meeting law. They have to certify that. The clerk's office is required to maintain that certification in its records. This was an issue that I believe that Attorney Leahy brought forward to, in his report, and to the subcommittee at the last meeting. We are taking steps to, in kind of an orderly basis, nail down the members, the sitting members of each and every board and committee in the city, and go through each and every board and committee, and mail out each member an open meeting packet, which includes the open meeting law, the guidelines, and the certification, with a cover letter instructing them that they need to read the open meeting law and the guidelines and the certification, and return the signed certification back to the clerk's office. And we are currently in the process of going through, board by board, commission by commission, to each member. There is between 200 and 250 individuals on that list. One of the challenges is that the maintenance of that list is not as organized as I think it could be, and it's not as clear within the structure of City Hall who is required to maintain that list. I know that the law department has taken the initiative to maintain, to work to maintain a list based on notifications that were sent to the council, as to when members were resigned or were added to those boards and commissions, and we are attempting to work off those lists to obtain accurate addresses and accurate membership of the boards and commissions. I wanted to, okay, as a side note, mention that one of the benefits of a rollout of the Agenda.net program is that it has a boards and commissions function, which enables one or more individuals to maintain, in a central location, a central database, lists of all the members of boards and commissions within the city, as long as, with all their contact information. As an aside, the, all the licenses for Agenda.net have already been paid for, so that's not, there's not a funding issue with Agenda.net at this point, it's more of a training and database creation issue. So, I've already spoken with the MIS department about beginning the rollout of the boards and commissions portion of Agenda.net, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. I will have multiple individuals in the clerk's office, including the assistant clerk, and at least one of the head clerks initially, trained in how to input the information into the, on the boards and commissions into the Agenda.net. And my goal is to have that as kind of a two-pronged process, in that while we are preparing these open meeting packets, we can use that data collection tool to input the same information into Agenda.net, so that the next time we have to do this, we'll have a database, instead of looking through Word documents and trying to locate addresses.
Counselor Martin.
Is that Agenda.net Amunis module, or is that a whole separate?
Agenda dot, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, my understanding of Agenda.net is it's a separate, it's a separate computer, bit of piece of computer software, that it, that there can be a function of pulling data from the Amunis system. And in addition, I've been informed that there is actually a function where that can interface with the website, with the city's website, so that the information on there, when altered, will change the list, the members of the boards and commissions on the city's website. Other than that, I think that the MIS director would have to speak more specifically about how the program interfaces with Amunis. So, that's the boards, that's the, kind of the boards and commissions portion of the open meeting law compliance, which I think was one of the other challenges that Attorney Leahy had mentioned.
Okay. Before you go on, I mean, some of the things are already being done for the current boards, current minutes, et cetera. Do you have an estimate of when we could consider it addressed, or basically, so that these lists are completed, or the minutes are generally in compliance? That is for the current stuff going forward.
Certainly. I think at this point, the meeting notices and the minutes that we've submitted since Attorney Leahy, at least since the point that Attorney Leahy was handling the minutes in early, in late August, early September, and going forward, the minutes are in compliance. We've reviewed the minutes, I've had conversations with Attorney Leahy, I've reviewed the form of the minutes with the city solicitor, and we are all in agreement that the form of the minutes, of the city council minutes and the subcommittee minutes, as they currently are constituted, are compliant with the open meeting law. It doesn't mean that they, they can't be improved, that we can't, but I don't think the improvements would alter their compliance or not. I think that they are compliant as currently constituted.
And as relates to boards, both record-keeping of the membership or in AgendaNet, how long do you think it would take to get that so that it's a current representation of the boards?
That's a very good question. The, the open meeting portion of the, kind of the boards and commissions challenge, we're working on currently. As to the, as to the portion of maintenance of the accurate records of members of the boards and commissions, until the rollout of Agenda.net, I didn't want to expend staff resources that might have to be duplicated just by putting the information into Agenda.net. That being said, I anticipate that if we can get it out within the next two weeks, you know, hopefully, hopefully, that's the kind of information that can be done prior to the end of the calendar year. I don't think there's any reason why, given adequate staff time, we can't have those, that portion of Agenda.net and the open meeting compliance of packets being sent out to each and every member of every board and commission.
Well, if you're not entirely sure right now, so, we'll get an update on that at the next subcommittee meeting, as to how much progress has been made, and hopefully, it may be completed, or you'll have a completion date by then.
Certainly, I certainly hope so.
All right. Do you want to continue?
I guess that the next large issue that was noted by Attorney Leahy was the records There, there are records that are kept in the clerk's office that are in deplorable condition. I know that there were photographs of those documents, I know that Attorney Leahy brought this up at the last, excuse me, the last subcommittee meeting. To be blunt, the question is whether we need those records at all. The record retention schedule that is put out by the Department of Vital Records and Statistics for municipal clerks includes vital records, deaths, births, marriages, which are required to be kept permanently in their original form. Those records, up until February of 2011, were what we all remember, the birth certificate cards, the death certificates, marriage license, licenses, which were the classic document that the clerk's office kept. And those are main, those three categories of documents are maintained in relatively good condition in the city clerk's office, in various locations throughout City Hall. The records from the early 1950s through the 1980s, the actual birth certificates and actual death certificates, are maintained in bound form in a safe in the clerk's office on the first floor of City Hall. Other records are maintained in a safe on the second floor of City Hall. And those are not the records of which you've received photographs. The records of which you receive photographs are commonly referred to as birth registers. And they were used as a kind of administrative tool to prevent the clerks from having to look through each and every individual birth record in a year, by distilling the information in a, these books are, you know, about the size of one of these desks. And all the information from a birth certificate or a death certificate is listed on an individual line in the book. So on each page, in each individual page in that book, you could have 50 different births. And so rather than have to look through 50 different birth certificates, or look through an entire year of birth certificates, those registers were kept in alphabetical order. So all of the children with the last name of Smith, who were born in Lowell in 1960, are listed in a book in alphabetical order, starting with the As, for as many pages as it took to get it through all the Smiths. The issue is that that register, which is the book that is commonly used in the clerk's office to, for locating the actual record, is not a vital record in and of itself. And we are in the process of obtaining an official opinion from the Department of Vital Records and Statistics as to whether or not we're required to maintain the original documents of those birth registers. My initial, after reviewing the law and reviewing the retention schedule, my initial response is, it is not a record that is required to be maintained in its permanent state by the Commonwealth. If that is the case, the issue of preservation of those records becomes not one of preserving the actual books, but whether or not we need the information that is stored in those registers for the clerk's office to adequately do its job. And one of the challenges is that historically, if all we're looking at was the original birth or death or marriage record, that's not a problem. We can find the book and look at the original record. The challenge comes in that, in many cases, there has been a subsequent change to the original record, an affidavit that at a christening or a baptism, the child had a different name, or that there was an error in the original record. Those affidavits are stored separately from the original records. And the only time, the only kind of quick way to find whether or not something has been, a record has been changed, is that the clerks, at the time, made notations in these registers if affidavits were filed for particular records. So if a child was born in 1960, and his name was John Smith, and then, he was baptized, and his name was James Smith, and they filed an affidavit changing his official birth record to James Smith, there's a notation in these birth registers saying, "See affidavit of such and such a date," and it has a document number, and we can pull the affidavit and say, "Okay, here's the affidavit that shows that he changed his name." Without these registers, there's not really a way to figure out whether or not a name was changed, except by going through each and every affidavit that was filed in a particular year. So, the challenge then becomes, how to save the information that's in these registers if we don't have to save the registers themselves? Those are two separate challenges. The challenge of saving the books is a fiscal challenge, but there are archivists, and it is, it is, if the funding exists to do the saving of is, it is, it is, if the funding exists to do the saving of the books, we simply give the books to the experts who say, who can restore them, or get them in some sort of usable condition and move forward. If all we're trying to do is save the information, the question then becomes, well, that's gonna involve staff time, putting the information from these registers into some sort of database form, or going forward with the scanning that I believe that Attorney Leahy had mentioned of the initial rec, of the original records themselves, so they're all in our database, that the, I believe the clerk's office has been working backwards from the 1990, backwards, putting records into the database. And if, 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 given adequate staff time, we can get all the records and the originals into the database, and the need for these records is obviated and...
So, I mean, right now, they have the register to do the searching.
Correct.
But if you scan them in, in a way that the information is computerized and searchable, then you just do a search on what was the original scanned certificate, say, for instance.
That is correct.
Okay. Counselor Mercer, you have a question?
I know this is bizarre, but I'm curious about this. Mary Smith is born today. How do you know that? How do you know that? Does the hospital contact the clerk's office? Do the parents come in and say they want a birth certificate? How does that information get into this? And I know we don't have much time, but I'm curious to know this. Maybe this could be a show for another time, because...
I, I can give you a one-minute primer.
Okay, good.
Prior to February of 2011, the hospitals in Lowell would send the birth records directly to the clerk's office, and they would be manually entered into the system by the, the clerk's office in the city of Lowell Clerk Department. After February of 2011, those records are sent directly to the state and placed in the state's database, which we currently have on, online access to. That's a, a challenge, that's a whole nother, nothing we can, we can do about that challenge. But we, the, the city of Lowell no longer maintains original birth records from February of 2011 going forward. All the information is sent directly, directly to the state Vital Records and Statistics, and they enter the information onto the computer. We have access to it to printout certified copies when the, the, once the, the database has been updated.
Some time ago, we didn't have computers, so they were just logged into a big book.
That's correct.
And what year was that, that we started to put it into the computer?
The, the current database that the, that is still in existence in the city was in, in the early 90s. So from 1990 till February of 2011, all of the, all of the births and, and deaths and marriages in the city were, are law, were, were logged in a particular clerk's office database that we hired a, a private consultant to create, and is currently...
I could ask you 20 more questions, but I won't. I won't.
Is, uh, yes, uh, is, so that database is still in use for records not in the state database?
That database is still in use. I believe that Mr. Leahy mentioned that they're gonna do, that the stat, state database right now is only for births. Sometime before the end of the year, they plan to roll out a, a death certificate portion of that database, but it hasn't been done right now. So currently, all the deaths and all the marriages still go through the city of Lowell's database at this point, the births are, what's it?
Is the state gonna continue to expand that to marriage certificates, et cetera?
That's a very good question. I know that they're rolling out the death certificates. I, I'm, I'm not sure whether or not, I think that the stat, state's database has the capability to do marriage certificates. I don't know when and if they plan to roll out that portion of it.
Counselor Martin?
We get some idea of the volume, the, so it's some, it's, it sounds like there's some form of computerization from 1990 going forward, and you said Attorney Leahy discussed entering back, perhaps going back. How many births were there in 1989? How many deaths are there in 1989? How many marriages? And I assume they increase over time, but maybe not. Maybe we're kind of at a level population now, we've been around the same. So what, do you have any sense of what the volume of these things is?
I, I, I don't. I can give you a general idea, which is that, that for, for births, for instance, we, we maintain the original birth certificates in small bound volumes that are about, you know, four inches thick. Those bound volumes hold between 200 and 300 birth certificates, and each year, I, I would estimate is four to, maybe five or six volumes. So that's 1,000, 1,200. I, I can certainly get a, a, a specific number for, for the, for the, the subcommittee before the next meeting. I, it's, I think it's piece of information that's important for us to have. It, it is time-consuming to, to work backwards to enter stuff in the database, and that's one of the reasons why, and I did want to mention it before the subcommittee closed, why one of the recommendations that Mr. Leahy had was to, um, to request a modification to the clerk, to the hours of the clerk's office. Even if, if it's not a permanent change, a temporary change that would allow us to have some dedicated staff time to catching up on this kind of data entry, heavy data entry work, I think would speed up the process. There are some, some issues that I think are, are, are pressing, that more staff time would simply make it more ea, more easy for, for the, us to get them done as soon as possible.
Right. I just bring up, the registry of deeds had the same issue. You know, they, you, you record a deed and it's kind of meaningless that there's a deed, then there's a mortgage, then there's a mortgage discharge, you know, it's just in a book. So what's really valuable is the index. And, um, and at some point, they just started today and moved forward, but recently, they've been able now to go back almost all the way. Now, I don't know if the indices all had to be entered by hand or not, but scanning technologies gets better all the time, too. So, um, but I, I get your point about going backwards, it's not necessarily the best use of resources.
Right. I mean, I think, I think the challenge is that from 1990, everything's electronic. All the birth records are stored in the database, all of the death records, all of the marriage certificates are all in the database from 1990 on. The issue is the current population, we're, we're looking back to the 20s and going forward, and to be blunt, there's, there's a, a large volume of requests for genealogical research that goes through the clerk's office that involve going back even before that. That's a, a topic probably for another day, but, but, um, the, the sooner, I think, because we're required to keep these records permanently... Yeah, well, I, I have sent in a request to the city manager that we be allowed to charge more, more, uh, for certified copies of things. We'll see how that, whether or not that gets before the, the, the council. So that, but I do think the sooner we're, we're able to devote some staff time, dedicated staff time, to working on those data entry, the pure data entry functions, the sooner we'll be able to reduce the amount of paper that's in the office, and the sooner we'll be able to catch up kind of on, on some of the lag stuff that we're, that's...
I think Counselor Martin's correct. Using the example of the Register of Deeds office, if we just make sure we don't fall behind any more than we are now, so everything going forward is computerized, then we can slowly work at the backlog of those that aren't, at least through, like you said, the 1920s where people could still be alive and may still need some records like that.
Right.
And once we get that, then we can work on older ones for genealogical purposes.
Right.
It is getting late enough this evening, and you have this list, which I think is now fairly complete unless someone wants to add something to it. We've already talked about several of these. There are some that we haven't spoken to directly. If you could, as many as you could, give us kind of like an action item and completion, estimated completion data, if you can. And obviously, you're just an acting clerk for the time being, so, but this will give us a starting point for some of these other items, so we can have some expectations about what can be done to address them, and how long it will take, so that we can then follow up and make sure that those things are being done in a reasonable amount of time. And some of them, obviously, I think, maybe are for the, when a permanent clerk's appointed, but I think are very important, is like the written policies and procedures, the office hours issue, and how soon we can get some of the stuff that we plan to computerize, computerize. And if there is any preservation, we can do some research on that to get the final answer on, does it need to be preserved? And if so, then how much will it cost? But at least it sounded like it may not be necessary to preserve those particular records that have been claimed to be deteriorating because we have other official records in their place. But if you could make that determination for us, maybe in the form of a spreadsheet or something like that, doesn't have to be a very long-winded report. And if it's things you can't address and don't know, just state so, and we'll follow up on it afterwards.
Yeah, I, I will certainly, working off this list and also adding anything I think that...
Absolutely.
...maybe there, I, I can certainly update the, the committee and the council as a whole as to where we stand on the issues that were identified both by Mr. Leahy and myself.
Yeah, and then, uh, we'll use that list as kind of our own oversight. We'll just keep track of it and seeing what's been accomplished and what, versus what was expected, until it's all done, and then we'll probably create a checklist from it for ongoing oversight. Things we'll check on every quarter or so to see how we're doing.
Certainly.
Okay. So, uh, at this point, I think we'll recess the meeting once again. Our, right now, target, two weeks from tonight for the next meeting, which is November 10th, another Thursday, again at 5:30. At that point, it'll probably just the clerk and maybe the input we need from the manager's office. Okay. Motion to re...
Motion to recess.
Motion to recess by Counselor Mercer for two weeks. I'll second the motion. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, so we stand in recess. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.